So I'd like to call the, to order the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for Wednesday, March 8th, 2023. Pursuant to ARS 38-431-02, notices hereby given to the members of the Commission and to the general public that at this meeting, regular meeting, the Commission may vote to go into executive session, which will not be open to the public, for legal advice and discussion with the city's attorneys for legal advice on any item listed on the following in, in the agenda pursuant to ARS 38-431.03A3. So if we can go ahead and do roll call?
Yes, Marie Jones. Carol Mandino.
Here.
Dr. Ricardo Guthrie.
Here.
Bob Harris III.
Here.
Mary Norton.
Here.
Ian Sharp.
Present.
And Marcel Camp, I believe, is excused.
All right. So, um, thank you for the roll call. And at this time, um, any member of the public may address the Commission on any subject within their jur, their jurisdiction that is not scheduled before the Commission today. Due to open meeting laws, the Commission cannot discuss or act on items presented during this portion of the agenda. To address the Commission on an item that is on the agenda, please wait for the Chair for me to call for public comment at the time the item is heard. Is there any public comment? Hearing none and seeing none, I will move on to item four, which is approval of the minutes of February 8th, 2023. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Uh, Chairman Mandino, I can move to approve the minutes from Wednesday, February 8th, 2023.
Thank you. And, um, is there a second?
This is Ian Sharp, I'll second it.
Okay, thank you, Ian. So Mary has made a motion and it was seconded by Ian for approval of the minutes from the meeting on Wednesday, February 8th, 2023. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Hearing none, oppose, the motion passes. And I will move on to the public hearing part of the agenda, item five, which is, um, PZ 2100284-03 Butler Avenue Lofts. And, um, if staff has a presentation, I'll ask the staff to present.
Thank you. Staff does have a presentation, let me get that ready. All right. So, good, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Patrick St. Clair. I'm a planner for the City of Flagstaff and I'm here to introduce you to the Butler Avenue Lofts application for a direct to ordinance zoning map amendment request. This project is number PZ 2100284-03. This map shows the project site in relation to existing development and surrounding uses. The development site is indicated by the red star and its extents are outlined in red. North of the development site is Interstate 40 and to the east are the Bluffs Senior Living Facility and the Forest Springs Neighborhood. South of the site, across Butler Avenue, is the Woodshire Multifamily Housing Development. And west of the site are Black Bart's RV Park and Restaurant. On this map, the development site is indicated by a heavy red line. The applicant MICM Butler Lofts Project LP requests the following: A direct to ordinance zoning map amendment changing parcel 10604006B, and 10744062 zoning from medium density residential, which is MR, and rural residential, which is RR, to highway commercial, which is HC. If approved, the zoning map amendment will change approximately 17 acres from the medium density residential and rural residential zones to the highway commercial zone. This project elects to rezone to the highway commercial zone because the highway commercial zone applies to areas of the city, primarily at commercial corridors, appropriate for the development of mixed-use projects that include commercial and residential uses. The proposal brings the development zoning in line with surrounding zoning and provides increased residential density and new commercial land uses in the area. The mixed-use development is comprised of commercial retail and multifamily residential uses. It includes a 5,600 square foot clubhouse and commercial office building will provide an approximately 1.09 acre commercial pad for future commercial development and includes 172 dwelling units and 43 fourplex residential structures. Let's look at the clubhouse and commercial office building, which is indicated in the red circle on this slide. This 5,600 square foot two-story structure anchors the project and marks its neighborhood presence along the Butler Avenue corridor. It includes a leasing office and clubhouse on its first floor and provides 2,154 square feet of commercial office space on its second floor. It has access to the Butler Avenue public sidewalk and is accessible from onsite vehicle and bike parking areas. The first floor plan of the building shows the arrangement of the leasing offices, lobby and kitchenette, fitness center and restrooms associated with the clubhouse. The second floor plan of the building shows the layout of the commercial office space, including conference rooms, single and open office spaces, kitchenette and restrooms. The commercial structure introduces the passerby or user to the project's architectural themes and material palette. The building employs materials, forms and scale common to those traditionally used in Flagstaff and in concert with the surrounding area. The future commercial pad indicated by the red circle would be split from the development site for future commercial, commercial development. The development agreement for the project limits the commercial uses that can be developed on this parcel and the following uses are excluded: industrial, manufacturing, processing and wholesaling uses, residential uses, equipment rental yard uses, cemeteries, telecommunications facilities, transportation and infrastructure and vehicle sales and services. Now we can look at the multifamily residential buildings. A single fourplex is within the red circle. The residential buildings are generally located north of the clubhouse and commercial office building and the future commercial pad along the Butler Avenue frontage. The residential structures surround open spaces that include forest resources and a portion of the site shielded from the Butler Avenue corridor. Pedestrian and bicycle activity is encouraged by interconnected sidewalks that provide access to site amenities, civic and open spaces, commercial spaces and multimodal transportation networks adjoining the site. The residential floor plans comply with architectural design standards and provide a front porch, exterior enclosed storage area and screened rear yard area. The buildings integrate various combinations of one, two and three bedroom dwelling units, but the exteriors all appear alike. This generates the unique and ubiquitous character of this mixed-use development. The fourplex, the fourplex structures are clad in a mix of wood and metal exterior finishes like the commercial and clubhouse structure. The unifying architectural theme of the project is easily discernible in the elevations and fits in scale and appearance for the site's position within a regional urban activity center and existing neighborhoods. The total residential unit mix includes the following: 26 one-bed, one-bath units, 122 bed, two-bath units, and 26 three-bed, two-bath units. The developer has agreed to offer 5% or nine of the units as affordable housing units. Mixed-use projects are required to meet development standards indicated in section 104060, 260 of the City of Flagstaff zoning code. To meet those standards, the proposal creates compatibility among the uses on the site through onsite pedestrian, bike and vehicle or circulation. Also, the civic spaces provide transition from public to private areas and the residential buildings are arrayed to create safe homes with adjacent open space and amenities blended into the native terrain. Street frontage improvements interconnect onsite pedestrian and bicycle circulation with adjacent multimodal routes and public transit. And each of the building types share a common exterior material palette, details and design elements that exhibit a unifying architectural theme appropriate and responsive to neighboring developments. The site plan application for this proposal was approved on February 2nd, 2023. The site plan was approved on condition that the proposal submit for and receive approval of a direct to ordinance zoning map amendment. This parcel is, or is within the resource protection overlay zone. The onsite portion of the rural floodplain indicated in bright blue at the northeast of the map will be covered by a drainage maintenance easement intended to remove hindrances to maintenance of the floodplain at that location at the request of the stormwater division. Tree resources must also be protected within the overlay. Commercially zoned sites must preserve a minimum of 30% of tree resources and the proposal shows a 35% retention rate for these resources. No steep slopes, which are those exceeding 7, 17%, are proposed to be disturbed. Developments with 50 or more dwelling units shall provide a minimum of 5% of the site as civic space. The plans identify 5.7% of the project as civic space and these areas are shown in pink on this map. The proposal is required to provide 15% of the site with open space. 2.39 acres is required and the three open spaces indicated in green on the map cover 3.49 acres or approximately 20% of the site. Bicycle racks are available across the site and a future connection with the Schweitzer Wash footstool indicated in purple on the map is anticipated. Though not required in conjunction with a direct to ordinance zoning map amendment, the applicant provided a conceptual landscaping plan showing all landscape areas and tree locations that generally meet required landscaping standards. A final landscape plan will be reviewed for compliance and approval at the time of civil set permit submittal. Outdoor lighting plans are also not required in conjunction with a direct to ordinance zoning map amendment. The applicant would be required to provide an outdoor lighting permit showing compliance to the standards of Division 105070 at the time of building permit submittal. Onsite parking requirements were calculated using commercial retail and market rate multifamily housing parking standards. A total of 375 parking spaces are required for the, for the development. Transit and bicycle parking reductions drop the total parking to 327 spaces. The project provides 352 parking spaces. The project will provide 40 total bicycle parking spaces, which is in excess of the 19 required, 16 of which are uncovered and 24 of which are covered. A traffic impact analysis for the project was approved January 5th, 2022. Mitigation of impacts will be accomplished through construction and in-lucash contributions from the developer to the city for certain improvements along Butler Avenue. The developer must pay in-luc fees for a right turn lane into the eastern most driveway of the project. The traffic impact analysis found the proposal sufficient to require the developer to pay a proportional share of the permanent signal plan for the nearby Butler Avenue and North Fourth Street intersection. Timing of payments for in-luc fees and proportional share costs are addressed in the project's development agreement. The developer is also responsible to construct a left-hand turn lane into the western most driveway for the project. A water sewer impact analysis was completed on August 31st, 2022. All onsite water and sewer infrastructure are the requirement of the developer and the project was required to pay a proportional share of the city's solar air transmission main project, which will provide a secondary water source to the area. The developer plans to loop new eight-inch water lines and eight-inch sewer lines across the site in a shared public utility easement below parking areas and onsite driveways. The new eight-inch water line will tie into an existing 24-inch water main within Butler Avenue at two places. The new eight-inch sewer line will connect to an existing eight-inch sewer line also within Butler Avenue. The project provides onsite volume mitigation, peak flow mitigation and low-impact development requirements including runoff capture volume and water quality components. The site includes three surface basins and three underground storage basins to mitigate increased runoff from the development. These systems will retain and meter out runoff capture volume and retention volume. A small portion of the site with uh, within the rural floodplain will be covered with a drainage maintenance easement, which is addressed in the development agreement. The project meets stormwater requirements and the proposed will provide benefits to the stormwater system as a whole. As part of the regional plan analysis associated with the direct to ordinance zoning map amendment, staff reviews a parcel's area and place type designations shown on regional future, regional plan Future Growth Illustration Maps 21 and 22. The subject property is designated as a future urban area type and is located within a regional urban activity center place type. The project's area type describes the context of the site and the place type provides the framework for density, intensity and mixes of uses to be provided. Characteristics of a regional urban activity center include larger mixed-use projects along travel corridors of the activity center. Professional office, commercial and residential land uses are expected as part of the, of mixed-use developments. Each urban activity center is distinct and unique, but each seeks to provide a variety of housing types, a unique sense of place and should contain connected pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure to public transit. Regional urban activity centers anticipate a density of eight-plus units per acre with mixed-use projects and the proposal has a density of 10.8 units per acre. Rezoning the parcel to highway commercial and stipulating that rezoning on the proposed site plan will introduce a mixed-use development into this regional urban activity center that matched the characteristics just described. This slide lists a number of goals and policies within the chapters of the regional plan that city staff and the applicant analyzed to verify conformance of the proposed project in addressing issues important to the community in order of the guidance of the regional plan. A comprehensive regional plan analysis identifying relevant goals and policies is included as part of the staff report for this proposal. However, the policy analysis shows that rezoning supports increased density in an existing urban activity center and increases commercial use in the area. The proposal will establish a sustainable all-electric development that is required to pay costs for and construct portions of upgraded city transit and water infrastructure. The project preserves floodplain and forest resources and integrates open spaces into the built environment. The development is, is an infill investment into an existing neighborhood and regional urban activity center. The proposal will serve to develop high-quality, complete and connected places within the community. The proposed amendment must be evaluated against and found consistent with three findings. Regarding finding number one, which is conformance with the general plan. The policy analysis indicates that the proposed development generally conforms to the characteristics desired in a regional urban activity center. It provides new commercial uses, civic spaces and increases residential density in the activity center. The project supports connections to multimodal transportation and enhances the quality of existing neighborhoods. Finding number one is met. Regarding finding number two, community benefits and public good. The pro, oh, sorry. The project will infill an underutilized property, commits 5% of the dwelling units as permanent affordable housing units, provides cash-in-luc payments for an off-site public water main and for traffic infrastructure improvements along Butler Avenue corridor. The project is a sustainable all-electric development providing recycling and waste management and promotes alternate modes of transportation. The proposal contributes to the stability of an active and growing urban activity center. Finder number two is met. Regarding finding number three, which is site physical suitability. The IDS staff reviewed the application and concluded that the site was suitable for the proposed development. The IDS team based its conclusion on the review of all applicable codes and requirements as well as impact analysis for the site. Any potential impacts will be mitigated by the applicant. Finding number three is met. A draft development agreement has been prepared and continues to be negotiated throughout the review of this project. The primary purpose of this agreement is to set out roles and responsibilities regarding the administration of the affordable housing units, indicates land uses allowable in the future commercial pad, indicates cost and payment timing for the in-luc frontage improvements, the proportional share cost and payment timing of the Butler Avenue and North Fourth Street intersection permanent signal and identifies cost and payment timing for the solar air transmission main proportional share. Two neighborhood meetings were held for this project, the first on October 3rd, 2022 and the second on October 6th, 2022. The general topics discussed were impact of the new development on current traffic in the area, the forward nature of the units and the location of commercial uses on the site. Staff recommends the Commission, in accordance with the findings presented, forward the direct to ordinance zoning map amendment request to the City Council with a recommendation for approval of case PZ 2100284-03, subject to the following five conditions, which will be included into the zoning map amendment ordinance. These conditions are also included in the staff report for this planning and zoning public hearing. This is the end staff's presentation. Are there any questions?
So, thank you for that presentation, Patrick. That was a great presentation. Appreciate it. Are there any questions from commissioners? I, uh, Mary has her hand up?
Mary. Yes, thank you. Um, first of all, I just wanted to clarify on this rezoning, um, are we just considering the rezone alone? Or is it in conjunction with the site plan and predicated on the site plan that includes the residential product and the commercial office space and all that that's been uh, illustrated in the floor plans and, and renderings? Um, so is, is this, uh, not a separate rezone and site plan? It's all in one? Or are we just looking at the rezoning of these parcels? That's my first question.
Thank you for that question, uh, Ms. Norton. Yes, and so the, the direct to ordinance zoning map amendment request is, is founded on the specific site plan that was approved. The site plan was, was PZ 2100284-02 and the ordinance, uh, the, the direct to ordinance zoning map amendment is a three. It carries forth and uses the site, the approved site plan for the development as the basis for the, um, rezoning approval.
Okay, so our consideration of this rezone is predicated on the use that is going to be, well, the type of use that's going to be on these parcels per the site plan. So it is connected in, in a sense. Is, is that, am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. It, um, yes, and any, any, any changes, you know, were, were there to be any changes? Um, there are certain administrative um, tools that we have for, for small changes, but, uh, were, were any major changes to occur um, to the proposed, to the site plan, uh, they would need to come back in for site plan. They may need to come back in for site plan review and go back through the, um, direct to ordinance zoning map amendment process.
I see. Okay. Um, so my comments with regard, with regardance to this is, you know, at, at first glance, the development checks a lot of boxes, which you've illustrated in your presentation and it was all there as far as slope and natural space and, uh, the foots connection and all of that parking, everything, um, it looks good. And, you know, often what we see, Ms. Miramonte often goes above and beyond and those sorts of things. So that all looked good on, on a surface, uh, review. Um, what caught my eye was I would have liked to have seen a higher percentage of, of affordable housing contribution, but I get that there's probably some withholding happening for when this does go to council. Um, I, I'll touch on that again later. Um, the other thing that caught my eye is why isn't the, the, uh, density a little higher? If we're going to rezone these piece, these parcels to allow for a higher density, this comes in, you know, just at the, at the minimum. And this, these are parcels that are ideal for a higher density being that they go between I-40 and Butler and next door is, you know, four and, was it three and four stories high of the Bluffs? And such, so I, I really would have hoped that if we're going to go for a rezone, that we would get the most out of the parcel and get a higher density, more units and really, you know, be chipping away at, at our housing crisis. Um, I was, I would have rather have seen something designed that was, uh, closer in scale or in feel to, you know, the Bluffs retirement living as opposed to trying to use the Brookfield development across the street, which is, uh, Woodshire on Butler, which is, you know, being marketed as vacation getaway homes. Um, so, you know, I always appreciate and commend Miramonte's acknowledgement and efforts to build in response to the tenure housing plan and the regional plan. And, and I've seen, you know, over the years that this builder has pivoted to do that, you know, by going from custom homes and production tracks homes to infill condominiums and fulfilling some of that missing middle of housing types. And, and we need builders to build what has been identified as what Flagstaff truly needs. But I feel that this rezoning for this purpose reflected on this site plan does not, does not reflect that. Um, when we approved a similar rezone for Miramonte Holdings LLC last year out on Cortland, and it was a similar residential product for rent. And I thought, oh, they're, they're dabbling in the build-to-rent market and diversifying their portfolio up here. All well and good. Um, but this rezone request is full of full-on build-to-run endeavor. Um, you know, with, you know, MICM LP is Miramonte and ICM Asset Management, you know, investors. And I'm, I follow development and the build-to-rent market and it's a surging new trend in the last couple of years all over the country, including Phoenix, among builders and developers and investors. And it's popular because it's a, a high return. And developments can be built all at once with control and lower cost and cookie cutter consistency and there's low turnover once they're leased, but these are higher-end, high-dollar rentals requiring higher income. And they're typically found in, you know, metropolitan regions where people might not ever want to buy a home and there's a market for that. But I just feel that the last thing Flagstaff needs are more high-priced rentals. And oftentimes these build-to-rent developments masquerade as a solution to housing shortages. But here in Flagstaff, that's not really what's going to serve our locals and our workforce and our families that are trying to buy a home and save for a down payment. Um, so I just feel that, you know, Flagstaff has such a limited amount of developable land remaining in city limits and that when zoning requests come forward, it's the only opportunity the city, public, we as a commission, the council, has to influence what's built there. So if this rezone goes through with a recommendation to council, I hope at minimum, there's a recommendation for more affordable housing units, up from the five percent and the nine units that are there to there. More so, I'd wish to see a complete redesign that had a higher density if we're going to rezone this. But I just, I don't believe that this rezone with this site plan makes the most of the opportunity of the rezone parcels. And I believe that the build to rent is a detriment to the public interest and the welfare of the city. And just, you know, I have a problem with finding two. And I probably will vote no based on that. I don't have a problem with rezoning these infill pieces. I just don't support what it's being rezoned for. So anyway, those are my comments and my observation of what I see happening with this type of development coming to Flagstaff. Thanks.
Patrick, may I, this is Charity with Miramonte Homes. Is there an opportunity for me to address some of the questions and comments that Commissioner Norton had?
This is Commissioner Mandino, and I was going to recognize you, Charity, to answer those, but do you have a presentation before?
I certainly do, but while it's, you know, fresh, I'd like to, if it's, if there is an opportunity for me to address this question, and I'd like to just share some additional things of our our project as well when the opportunity is right. But
So if you would like to address the comment and the questions from Commissioner Norton, that's fine. And then after you address those, I'll go to Commissioner Harris, if that's okay.
Thank you. Commissioner Norton, when we were looking at this site to develop, we explored a variety of different building plans to see what would work best, knowing that the the site would allow for, I believe it was up to fifty feet in in height. And so we had looked at, actually, quite a few different building types. And I'll tell you, the the site's very challenging because it's in a resource protection zone. And so we were not able to maximize the site like we would have initially liked to because of those resource restrictions. When we looked at potentially putting the three-story buildings similar to what we what we were building over on Ponderosa Parkway, we ended up not even really getting enough additional units. So our project is about one hundred and seventy-two units is what we are going to be building. I believe we were only ten units over that, but the construction costs were substantially greater than what we were looking at as far as building for the loft units. And and you mentioned affordable and building rentals that the community can live in. Those things are all factored into why we chose to go with the loft-style townhomes versus a three- or four-story multifamily apartment complex, because it was just so much more expensive. The land alone is incredibly expensive, and you're you're mentioning there's not a land, a lot of land left in Flagstaff. That is true. That's part of my job, is I go out and I look for parcels of land in Flagstaff and in northern Arizona. And this was a site that was available over seventeen acres in the middle of town, which is, you can't find it anymore. And I will tell you, we are paying a premium, even though we had to go through the the rezoning. So when you add in the cost of the land, then you factor in the cost of construction. We really felt that this was the best project, and it took us about six months before we ever submitted our initial concept plan, because we were looking at all those things to try to come up with the best project for that site to maximize it. So I hear you. And I will tell you that we have made a concerted effort, and and really, this is the the best design for the site that is the most affordable, so our rents can be reasonable. And as far as the five percent goes as well, again, we're in an inflation. So when we're looking at all of the costs of construction, everything is factored in. And we're contributing over four hundred thousand dollars. That's what we're proposing to contribute for offsites to the City of Flagstaff for water and for the traffic improvement projects. So all of these things add up, and we really want to build a project for Flagstaff. There's a major need, you know, the the housing plan identifies that over seven thousand nine hundred and seventy-six housing units are needed by twenty thirty-one. Every development that is approved helps to meet those needs. And will help to eventually bring down costs. You know, the more units you bring into a market, the the lower rents will eventually go. And Chris Kimerly also would like to say something if if we have a minute for him to speak as well.
Can we move to Bob? Because I'd like to hear his concerns first and his question or his questions.
Okay.
And then we can move to more from you, Charity. So Bob, if you'd like to give your concerns or questions, you have the floor.
Thank you. Yeah, I just have one quick one. I'm not sure this is the correct form for this question, but just reminding you that the guidelines or policies, what what is the mechanism that is in place to ensure that a developer builds units dedicated for affordable housing? Or how does that? How does that ensure that that goes down or takes place?
And if we could have staff answer that question?
Yes, Mr. Harris, could you repeat that? I missed just that the the middle part. It got a little, little, the the sound was weird. But you'd asked about a mechanism in place to
to ensure that the the transition of the nine affordable units get built and conveyed. It just remind me of that process or how that happens.
Yes, sir. So within the development agreement, there is there is an affordable housing plan. It stipulates all of the the numbers of units, the the length of the, these are, these are, these are proposed to be permanently affordable, which means that they'd be affordable, they they would be at that rate, those rates for thirty years. And then there is a, the the portion of that housing plan handles how those, how those units are are used and how they are obtained from the public, through the public and stuff. So essentially, the development agreement has all of specifications for the affordable housing portion of this proposal. And that's what we would, that's what staff, that's what legal in our applicant would be looking at to ensure that those units exist and stay existing for the for the time indicated and at the rates required.
Okay. And are those parcels deeded to the city? And is the developer required to build those, or does the city facilitate the construction of those?
No, all of that, they're, they're, all of this is, this, this development will all be on a single parcel. The affordable units are part of the development, are built as the units are built. And and so they would be managed by the property management company, and that property management company would then be reporting to our housing, our housing division about what's going on with those units.
In terms of, okay.
So, so, so there's a, there's a few steps, but it's, but again, it's, it's all laid out in the contractual obligations of the development agreement. And the housing plan itself is an exhibit attached to that and discusses all the finer points of the affordable housing portion of this development.
Okay, so the the owner will retain ownership of all the property, all the development. And that agreement is for thirty years, and then after that time, they can choose to do something different with those nine units then?
Correct.
Okay. And are those spread out throughout the development, or are they all confined to one certain area?
Typically, those are spread out across the development. They're not isolated into to just a corner over here or a corner over there. Again, depending on the way the housing, the housing plan is is structured, you know, they can show up in different places across the site, but they're not, they're not crowded into one area.
Okay. All right, that answers my question. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. And that brings me to ask the developer if the affordable housing units are the, involve the different sizes of apartment units.
Um, yes, yes, they do. They have a mix between one bedrooms, two bedrooms, and three bedrooms. So we'll, we'll have twenty-six, we're proposing to have twenty-six one bedrooms, twenty-six three bedrooms, and and then a hundred and twenty-two bedrooms. And so it'll be proportionally divided between those units.
Okay, thank you. Are there any more questions for commissioners to staff? And Bob, I'm going to ask you to lower your hand if you can. And I also want to remind everybody that they should be on mute unless they're speaking. So if you'll lower your hand, and then those of you who haven't muted, if you would. And then seeing that I have no more questions from commissioners, I will ask the Miramonte to, if they have a presentation.
Chairman, it's Chris Kimer, it's Chris Kimerly from Miramonte Homes. And and I'm sorry, my connection is not allowing me to raise my hand, so I apologize.
Okay, so go ahead. I remember there was a question you were going to
Yeah, I, I just wanted to clarify the the build to rent. Traditional build to rents are single-family detached homes. They're small, but they're detached. We are building attached townhomes. So our density numbers are much greater than a traditional BTR that you see down in Phoenix. Staff early on had asked us to look at the density issue. And specifically, we spent the time and energy and laid out the site with our three-story buildings that we're doing over on Ponderosa. And as Charity said, because of parking requirements, tree ordinance, the increase in the unit count was not enough to make it worthwhile. And to be real clear, when you build buildings like we're doing at Ponderosa, these three-story buildings, we're putting elevators in. And not only are we having trouble getting elevators, but the cost of these elevators is now exceeding a hundred thousand dollars per elevator. So the cost to build the three-story building far exceeds what the cost is to do these individual townhome buildings. Furthermore, the townhome buildings are more family-friendly. We're trying to do more family-type housing where they actually can go out in their backyard, they have storage units in their back. And and especially here on the Butler site, we have a pretty, pretty large amenity package. So I, I just want to clarify, this is not, this is not going to be weekend rentals, VRBO. As anybody that has known our developments in the past, for-sale developments, I am horribly against VRBO. I can't stand the idea on a lot of levels. So we, we do not do VRBO in our for-sale. We're not doing it in our rentals. So this is not, this is for local people to live in. It's not for people coming up from Scottsdale on the weekends. But the overriding thing is, as Charity said, the density difference between townhomes and three-story dense buildings, it just wasn't worthwhile. And and the the benefit is, this is a lot more family-friendly. They walk in their front door. They share a common wall. That's it. They control their two levels. It's their home. They're not walking up three flights of stairs or going up an elevator. So I just want to make that real clear. Thank you.
Thank you. And then I see Mary has another comment, so Mary, go ahead.
Thanks. And and I really appreciate the the comments and clarification and explanations by Mr. Kimerly and Charity. I, I completely understand, you know, where you're coming from in that. Have you two questions? And I like, let me say, I like the product. This is the kind of product that falls into that missing middle that's been identified that we are lacking in in Flagstaff. But have you considered making these for sale? Of course, with the restrictions of no short-term rentals. I was really glad to hear you say that in your belief. And secondly, if they are to be, you know, if they stay as rentals, do you have an idea of where it falls in the, sort of in the area median income percentages as far as where these rents might fall? As I referenced, you know, from what I've read about, you know, sort of these large rental communities that are not your typical multifamily. It's just that they're really high rents and, you know, only reach the high-income residents. So those two questions, have you considered for sale? And what would be the the AMI generally for the rents? Thanks.
You know, the for-sale, it's Chris Kimerly again. And again, I apologize. I'm sure my name's not showing up, but I just, I've had to get on and off a couple of times, and I just, I have no visual. I'm just basically talking on my phone. So the the problem with the for-sale right now is, and we have the Affordable program at Ponderosa, and we are working with staff to try to figure out a better way to accomplish what everybody wants. Because frankly, with the interest rates going up and frankly, costs going up, it, it, it's, we're getting a real, we've had a real hard time finding people that can qualify under the Affordable program with the city. The best way to do the affordable and the the workforce housing is with rentals. Now, granted, it's a rental, it's not an ownership, but it's just, it's, we've had extreme problems at Ponderosa. You can talk to anybody on staff, and they've been working with us. I think we sold three affordables out of the sixteen we have to do. And in fact, the city's looking through their housing commission, I guess, of possibly buying some units and and renting them for affordable. So the the for-sale housing right now is just really, really difficult to get anything affordable. The best shot for the workforce housing, and as as Mary put it, the middle of the market, is on these rentals.
Thank you. That gives That, um, gives us a more clear vision. Uh, Mary?
Uh, yeah, I just wanted, just wanted to add in on to that discussion. Uh, and I, I completely understand how difficult it is to get people to qualify for those affordable housing units. It's such a small window to qualify. And I just, you know, I, I don't always necessarily believe that afford, affordable housing or contributions should be a part of every development. It's just my personal opinion on that. Um, but I would almost would rather see these for sale, uh, and, you know, uh, in, in an attainable price. And you don't, and not having to contribute to the affordable housing program. But I know that that's kind of against the trend right now. Uh, just wanted to comment back, share my thought. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who has any questions? And does Miramonte want to make a presentation?
Um, hi, this is Charity with Miramonte. I would just like to highlight a couple of things. I'm not going to go through the entire slideshow. Patrick did such a wonderful presentation, so it's not necessary, but I did want to share a few things. So I'm going to share my screen if, um, if we're ready to do that now.
Thank you, that would be great.
Okay, and, um, please let me know when you can see my screen.
We can see it.
Okay, very good. So as I mentioned earlier, um, we all understand that we're in a housing crisis in, in Flagstaff and in Northern Arizona. And it's known that we're going to need over 8,000 units by 2031. So we really do believe that this project will help. Every project that's approved, um, for development, regardless if it's a rental project or housing project, will help to, um, meet these needs for the Flagstaff community. And the more units you bring into the area, again, it's the supply and demand. So more units equal lower prices. Um, but right now, there's just such a need. And so we're really hoping that, uh, you'll see this and, and approve the project on that basis. Um, one of the things I just wanted to mention too, as far as the location and the activity center, according to the Flagstaff Regional Plan, future growth is to be concentrated in reinvestment areas and include a balance of infill and redevelopment. So we mentioned that this site is an infill site. So this really is the perfect site for this type of development, um, in Flagstaff. And, uh, land is scarce. So, uh, we were lucky actually to enter into a contractor with the seller. Uh, it took us about nine months just to even negotiate, uh, the purchase contract. So we're getting, uh, we're hoping we're, we're going to near to the end and close on this deal and be able to develop this project as soon as this coming fall. Um, this is a rendering of what the units will look like, the four-plex buildings. And I wanted to highlight that, um, our project really is creating a sense of place where each of the units will have their own backyard and a front patio. They're going to be able to look out on the tree-lined streets. It's creating a community where residents will be able to get to know one another. Um, what we're also doing is we're going to be doing all low VOC and formaldehyde-free materials in the carpet, cabinets and paint. As Patrick had mentioned, this is an all-electric development. We're not going to be installing any natural gas. So we'll be doing all energy-efficient appliances and HVAC. And then also what we do in our development, um, to help make our buildings more energy efficient is we, uh, use open cell foam on the underside of the roofing deck. And this creates a conditioned space on the interior of the tresses and makes the heating and cooling more efficient. We also install high-quality vinyl windows and dense foam insulation on the sides of the slabs. And high-density foam is also installed for all penetrations and window openings. Our windows will also be very high-quality vinyl. The buildings are also wrapped in Tyvek and this prevents leaks and decay and helps to prevent air penetration into the building. So we build very high-quality, uh, homes and apartments as you've seen through our developments throughout Flagstaff. Um, what we're going to be doing to promote recycling is that we will have trash and recycling receptacles within the development and educational signage on the bins so that the tenants know what's, um, uh, recyclable and what isn't and that, uh, materials don't get put in the wrong bins. We're also going to be including double heavy-duty hidden waste baskets in the kitchen. And this will help to promote recycling within the units. And then our property managers are going to provide educational material to the tenants when they, um, when they move in. And this will give them information on local valet services for recycling and composting and also how they can get involved. If they want to learn more about recycling with, um, getting involved with City of Flagstaff's sustainability. During construction, what we're going to be doing is we're going to provide a plan for recycling and we'll reuse native materials onsite to the extent feasible. Here's a, a floor plan. I believe, uh, Patrick touched on this earlier. So we, we propose to have 26 one-bedroom units, uh, 26 three-bedroom units and then 122 bedroom units. And the one-bedroom units are approximately, excuse me, 813 square feet. Two-bedroom units approximately 1,071 square feet. And then the three bedrooms are approximately 1,340 square feet. We're also going to be including a single-track trail, which will connect to the Flagstaff urban trail system. And this also helps to support a sustainable development to encourage more walking, biking and alternative modes of transportation. Here's a depiction of the clubhouse and office building. So this faces, uh, this depiction here is actually facing Butler. And so what, what will be allowed is, um, individuals who want to come and visit, uh, the commercial office space. We don't have a tenant at this time, but we have been talking to, uh, a variety of different potential users and received a letter of interest from a real estate company. And so, uh, uh, individuals who want to come to the commercial building will have the opportunity to actually park within the development. And there's going to be an entrance on, within the development and then also facing Butler. Here's a depiction of the lower level, which will provide a workout facility, leasing office and then an open lobby area. And then this is a depiction of the office area for rent. And then just to highlight the benefits to the community. Again, we are proposing to develop an underutilized infill property in the middle of Flagstaff and provide 172 housing units to the City of Flagstaff. We are voluntarily offering 5% of the units as permanently affordable for 30 years. We, um, did not take any incentives as part of our development, but we are voluntarily offering 5%. We are also offering cash and lieu contributions for offsite public water main. Cash and lieu offsites for the public tran, traffic improvements on Butler Avenue. Again, we're going to be doing an all-electric development with Energy Star appliances and HVAC. Recycling and waste management onsite and during construction. We'll be preserving an additional 5% of tree resources. This will be a low-impact development, providing foot connectivity. We're going to be doing four EV-ready parking spaces and one EV dual-port station. This is also exceeding the code requirements. We're going to be providing 40 bicycle parking facilities. This is 222% above the requirements of the code. The code required 18 uncovered spaces. We're going to be doing, uh, 24 covered bicycle spaces and 16 uncovered. And then preserving an additional 1.4 acres of open space. This is also above the requirements of the code and offering an additional 0.11 acres of civic space above the requirements of the code. So, um, we are excited to share this project. And then, um, are there any additional questions? I can stop sharing.
Do any commissioners have any questions? Okay, and does anybody else have any questions? Anybody? Hearing none, and thank you, Charity, for, um, the presentation. I could entertain a motion? If anybody's so moved? So I will go ahead and make a motion.
Carol?
Yes?
Let's open the public hearing and see if there are any comments.
Okay, I thought I did that, but, okay.
You may have, I'm sorry, let's just.
That's all right. So does any of the public, I'll just ask again if any of the public has any questions? That may have been misunderstood on, from what I was saying. So seeing, um, I don't see anybody with any questions. Um, either I can entertain a motion or I can make the motion. Does anybody, any commissioner want to make the motion? If not, I will make the motion. PZ 2100284 dash 03, the Butler Avenue Lofts, that we approve. Let me, I'm going to come down here. Um, approve the lofts with staff recommendations to send to city council? Is that?
Um, and in accordance with the findings.
And in accordance with the findings. Thank you. Is there a second to the motion?
This is Ian Sharp, I will second the motion.
Thank you, Ian. So there's.
Sorry, and I want to make sure that that's with the, the five conditions, correct?
Right, I, it's, I believe I had said with the five conditions listed.
Perfect.
Okay. Is there any other discussion from commissioners? Any discussion? Any questions from commissioners? I will move to the vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay. And I'll explain my nay if, if, uh, for the record, Alex, so they have it. Uh, basically, I'm just, I'm going to stand by my, uh, opposition to finding two, that I, that I do believe that the, the bill to rent and the product that's being asked to be put on this rezoning of parcels has, uh, some detrimental value to the community. And I just, I want my nay vote to be, uh, you know, possibly a, a, a point of discussion for council when it gets there. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, sorry, I muted myself. The motion has passed. And we'll move on. Uh, thank you, everybody, for attending the meeting. I will move on to miscellaneous, miscellaneous items to and from commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you, Charity. And Chris. Is there anything?
Thank, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. Are there any items from commissioners or city staff? Hearing none, let me go back.
Carol? Sorry. Um, this is Alex. I just want to, um, we, our next P and Z meeting is the 22nd and that will actually have an in-person, um, component. So I'll follow up with, with everyone with emails, but, um, just want you guys to, to keep that in mind.
Okay, thank you. That might be a hard one for me to get to. I'm sorry about that, but, um, is there any other just, um, to and from commissioners? Hearing none, then, uh, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for attending.